Thank you. Good evening. It's now 7:05 PM on Tuesday, March 28th, 2023. This is the regular meeting for the Board of Education. I'm going to call the meeting to order now. And can I have a motion as we have an anticipated adjournment to executive session?
I move that we adjourn to executive session to discuss the employment history of particular persons, personnel matters and/or employee records and matters deemed confidential by state or federal law, including seeking advice from counsel.
It's been properly moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. We're now in executive session, 7:05 PM. We're expected back out at 8:00 PM. Thank you. It'll be out in a minute.
But those are fouls.
Yes?
I didn't want to have to carry them.
It's on Central Avenue next to Smash Burger, Shake Shack. Shake Shack? Smash Burger. I get mixed. I get mixed. Next to Shake Shack.
It was incredible.
Right on Central Avenue. They change their flavors every... Oh, great. Wonderful. It's 9:27 PM. We are way past our expected time. And... Thank you. B1, which is Pledge of Allegiance. Can we all please stand? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First, on our agenda is C1, Presentations from Lee F. Jackson Elementary School. I do need to apologize, Lee F. Jackson School. You guys waited almost an hour and a half for us. So, thank you. And we'll turn the mic over to you. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So, we do have a presentation, so I don't know if you want to relocate. Do you want me to sing while you're getting off the stage? [laughing] Okay, we're good. Can you hear me? All right. Well, thank you for inviting the Lee F. Jackson School to present. Good evening, Board President Mears. Good evening, Superintendent Iverson, trustees, central office administrators, and audience. Thank you all for having us. I am Patricia Simone, the proud principal of the Lee F. Jackson School. And with me tonight, I have Louis Ayala, our physical education teacher, Kathy Holmes, who is a kindergarten teacher, Christine Lutz, my fabulous music teacher, and Alexa Williams, who is our first grade teacher and grade level leader. So, the agenda tonight, we have five bullets: Shared School Vision, our District Math Initiative, Math Data, SEL, and Communication. So, I just want to start by reviewing the Lee F. Jackson mission statement. We are a fabulous school, early childhood, and our mission statement really reflects the mission of the Lee F. Jackson School is to provide appropriate environments and experiences that meet the need of young children. We really focus on educating young children, hands-on experiences, inquiry-based. It builds that strong foundation. We really devote our time and our staff are dedicated to develop active, compassionate public citizens with a lifelong of learning. And if, when you walk into the Lee F. Jackson School, that mission statement really reflects what we do as a staff, as a family. We refer to the Lee F. Jackson School as the Children's Museum because of all that fabulous art and hands-on experiences that we provide. The school goal, one of our school goals is aligned to the district initiative, and tonight you will hear more about this. So, by June 2023, there will be an increase in the percentage of students scoring on or above grade level by 10%, measured in the I-Ready Math Assessments to improve student achievement. So, you're going to hear a lot more about how we're doing this and what we're doing in regards to the math initiative. So, now I'm going to turn it over to my staff, and they're going to explain and go through the rest of the presentation. So, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kathy Holmes. I'm a proud kindergarten teacher at Lee F. Jackson. So, our District Math Initiative, how we are using the distributive leadership PLC structure, we have a team of educators coming together, different levels of leadership, including Ms. Gillan and including our principal, Ms. Simone, coming together to collaborate to create change. Our PLCs meet once every six-day cycle, and then if we have something to go over or something that we haven't finished, something that we have to continue, we can meet on a Wednesday when we don't have a Monday meeting. We'll meet on a Wednesday afternoon to continue our discussion. During our meetings, our focus is to brainstorm strategies to meet the needs of all of our students. We reflect on the pacing of the curriculum to ensure that the concepts that we have are, that we're on target with those concepts and meeting them in the time that we need. And we also read and discuss professional articles to examine best strategies for our The implementation of the I-Ready Math Program has been a positive one. We have noticed that it aligns with the I-Ready Diagnostic that the students take three times a year. They're exposed to the same language, starting at the beginning of the year, and it provides opportunities, the program provides opportunities for the students to have discourse, lots of turn and talk for the students. And they're discussing the strategies that they use to get to their answer. And they don't just tell us why, they don't just tell us one plus one equals two, they tell us why. And they're able to say that, they're able to express that, and they're able to tell it to each other. So, one of the things that I noticed is that they notice, they see that they can get to the same answer, but get to it in different ways. So, they're able to provide that. The program provides, like I said, for the discourse. And another way that Jackson is supporting the district initiative in our after-school program, we're focusing, we're focused on math and strengthening the skills of the students in the math that they need. So, here is our scoring for the I-Ready Math. We have seen progress at Lee F. Jackson, and we can applaud our babies for working so hard to achieve this. They were able to move, we were able to move them to 19% at mid and above grade level, from 9% to 16% for early and on-grade level. And then, for the students that were one grade level below, we were able to decrease the number from 74% to 60%, and the decrease in the number is a positive for the students because that means less students are in that range. And we were also able to move them from 11% to 5% for the students that were two-grade levels below. So, that shows our progress at Lee F. Jackson with the I-Ready Diagnostic.
Good evening. I'm Alexa Williams. I'm a first grade teacher at Lee F. Jackson, also serving as grade level leader this school year. So, I'm going to talk a little bit about what our data teams do during PLC. Our data teams pretty much meet collaboratively. We have scheduled meetings that pretty much focus on our teaching practice and learning. We specifically focus on issues, we don't focus on other issues aside from our teaching and learning practice within these meetings. We do follow a six-step process during our data meetings where we collect and chart our data, we display the data, we analyze it, and pinpoint strengths, weaknesses, and prioritize our students' needs. We set, review, and revise our SMART goals, SMART standing for specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and timely. We select common instructional strategies, we determine result indicators, and we also monitor that progress and evaluate results as we go along. How often do PLC meet? As Ms. Holmes mentioned, we do meet once a six-day cycle and sometimes after-school when we have our Monday or Wednesday meetings. What we focus on, what is the focus of meetings? We lead district-wide initiatives, we analyze the data and see how we can improve our instructional practices to better suit our students' needs. There's a constant monitoring of the progress and also peer visitations. We go into the classrooms, we visit our colleagues, and we kind of see what great things they're doing in their classrooms and see how we can adopt it and make it our own. How do the administrators and coaches interact with data teams? Provide dedicated time and tools to make data analysis easier, ensure that expectations are clear and that teams have the resources that we need, interact with teams and leaders frequently so that all teams are high-performing. We meet and participate in data meetings with the teachers, literacy and math coaches, attend PLC meetings when invited, and if an administrator or coach does attend our PLC meeting, they're not leading it, they're participating as any other member. And these are just a few of our programs and our assessments that we utilize throughout the year. How data is used to inform instruction at the school, department, grade levels, administer formative assessments, grade level collects and charts data, analyze data, prioritize needs, again, creating SMART goals, determining the instructional strategies, ongoing monitoring and discussion, and how our students provided additional support. We provide additional support through Daily Five, Daily Three, guided reading groups, small groups. We do have our after-school program that we have on Tuesdays and Thursdays that I coordinate. And in making our selection, we did take a look at the data to kind of pinpoint which students would best benefit from the additional after-school help. And we also have our AIS reading interventions as well.
Hi, everybody. I am Christine Lutz. I'm the music teacher at Lee F. Jackson School. I will be talking about SEL. I'm also on the SEL Committee. I'm a part of that. So, basically, SEL is already built into the schedule. It's not just one set period. It's right from when they walk into the door. Staff is distributed throughout the building to greet the students. There's also a period in the morning where the staff asks the students, "How are you feeling today? Why are you feeling that way?" Asking each other, "Why is this..." Just checking in to see how we're doing, reading the temperature. And then, there's also another period where we're checking in with the students after lunch. There's also the Second Step Program with the Parent Home Links. The SEL is also a common language, so it's not just something that they're only hearing in the classroom, they're hearing in the hallways, they're hearing it in the specials. So, it's universal throughout the whole school. We are definitely building a culture at LFJ. We're also raising our future at Lee F. Jackson, so we want that to continue on. In addition, we also have Cultural Heritage Months where we touch on each culture and celebrate it and talk about it. There are also SEL student nominations and restorative circles. That's one of the tools that we use to help students resolve conflict. For example, there's one teacher that has a Fix It Friendship Corner where students can sit down together and work it out. We're basically working on self-management and how their actions and reactions have cause and effect, and we're also looking to build empathy. As far as staff goes, Patricia does a great job. We have our staff shout-out box, which is great for us, just to see how, check in and say, "Hey, you're doing a great job teaching," or just to notice things that we would never notice. It really builds morale, and it's wonderful. Prize and recognition. We have a Sunshine Committee that does special breakfast for the staff, a team-building activity, staff breakfast. Patricia always does a great job checking in with us to see how we're doing. We have kindness boards and posters and motivational quotes. Okay, on to the next slide. So, Lee F. Jackson, PYP, International Baccalaureate in SEL. So, the IB learner profile, it's actually, it's a framework. It's to incorporate international mindedness and lifelong learning, so it's not just stopping at school. It goes through middle school, high school, and beyond. It helps to develop international-minded, respectful, responsible people on the local, national, and global level. When I saw the puzzle piece, I remembered that Dr. Iverson gave us this wonderful puzzle piece when she first came in, and it reminded me right of the first puzzle piece, and it says, "Together, everyone achieves more." This pin is in recognition of the valuable role that you play as a part of our team. You make the difference. So, that definitely stuck with me, and this piece shows how we work together as a staff, how we work together as a school, but also how we link those two pieces together between SEL and IB. At the last SEL committee meeting, they were linking SEL with the IB traits. So, for example, the latest, one example, we're risk-takers this month. So, risk-takers from the top would link down with responsible decision-making and self-awareness would be linked with being reflective. So, together, we are all part of the children's story. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Louis Ayala, and I'm the Physical Education Teacher at Lee F. Jackson. I'm just going to focus a little bit about how we do SEL in the special area subjects. So, as we all know, social-emotional learning happens everywhere, at home, in school, you know, in specific spots in school, like on the bus, cafeteria, on the playground. So, I think it's very important that we teach our students in our classrooms where they spend most of their days, long hours in school. So, it's very important that we teach SEL in our classrooms. So, social-emotional learning helps students succeed in the classroom and throughout their lives by developing skills for learning. And these are a couple of ways that we teach SEL in our special area subjects. So, by learning, we introduce SEL and growth mindset, class discussions, so something as simple as when we first come in the class, you know, sit them down, discuss how their weekend went, how their day went, something as simple as that, that just gets them interacting with the teacher, with each other, and, you know, shows respect where they're listening to each other about how their days went. Encouraging positive self-talk, feedback from others, being open-minded, meaning encouraging students to try something new. So, we always encourage students to try new things. They're young. We have K in one. So, personally, in PE, you know, a lot of the things that we teach are new to them, so encouraging them to try things that are new to them, even if they don't feel like they like it or they can't do it, you know, we always encourage them to try something new. Encourage cooperation, decision-making skills with group or partners, sportsmanship, which is very important. Sportsmanship teaches students to show respect, kindness, and fair play, not only in like the activities that we play in the gym in PE, but also outside when they spend time in the lunch. It teaches them when they join sports outside of school and just things in life in general. To do hard things, to challenge themselves motivated and persevere through challenges, has a growth mindset, and learns from mistakes. Positive reinforcement. And lastly, team building, which is working collaboratively and cooperatively with others on tasks and solve problems together. So, having them in groups, group discussions, giving them time to discuss strategies, things like that. Encouraging students to show respect, kindness, and fair play to others during games or activity, which I spoke about, has, it's the same thing as sportsmanship.
So, our communication with the parents is a very strong one. We really believe that the communication between the parents and the school has to be solid because we believe we're part of the village for the children. So, we have, Ms. Simone sends out weekly school messenger emails. All of the communication is translated into Spanish to make sure that we reach our population. We have flyers that we distribute. We also have, every teacher has the Remind app to be able to communicate directly with the teacher, and it works, it works very well. We have newsletters. We send out our monthly calendar to let parents know what is happening. We have the monthly lunch menu so they know what the options are for them to eat. We send emails, parents send emails to us. We ensure that we have our updated, their updated information. If needed, we have phone calls, we make phone calls to the parents, not just when there's an issue, but also to let the parents know, "Hey, your student is doing great. This is what happened today." I just wanted to share that, and parents are so appreciative of that. And also, twice a year, we have our parent-teacher conferences.
Okay. So, this was our school presentation, and I hope you enjoyed it. I want to thank my fabulous staff for coming out and supporting and presenting. So, thank you very much. Yes, you have any questions?
Okay, two questions. First of all, good presentation. For SEL, how do you measure your success? I mean, I know at the end of an IB lesson, there's some kind of exit thing, there's something the kids do, there's some assignment they take care of, and you see how they solve a problem, and there's some piece of paper or something, you know, they got the lesson. If it's a lesson about kindness, they've given you some feedback. SEL, how do you know that you're succeeding? How do you measure it?
So, Ms. Valerie Williams, who was our IB coordinator and also our librarian, reading specialist, she implements the IB program through reading. She also develops and creates many activities where the students are demonstrating, drawing a picture, writing a sentence, sharing, I mean, you come through the, any of the special areas of the classroom, just the way the students are acting and the way that they are being kind to each other. But the hands-on, the demonstration of not an exit ticket, but their final product responding to literature through a picture or, you know, writing a sentence gives us information on the SEL. Do you want to add anything else? I know that in the special areas, they develop it through song, through art.
Go for it.
I'll spare you the singing for tonight. [laughing] It's a little joke. I think the ultimate, the ultimate test is can they do it on their own? That's the ultimate test. Are they able to take what we learned and do it when we're not watching? That's, I know we're not really measuring, like, that wasn't the answer of exactly measuring it, but are they able to do it independently? It's like when you teach your children how to be a good person, are they going to go off and do it on their own when no one's looking?
Right. So, you can, you can do the negative version of it by, there are not so many incident reports as there used to be because the kids are getting along better, right? So, you can say, "Oh, look, those numbers went down." Is there a way that you can say, "Oh, these numbers went up?" Or, "I have anecdotal evidence of this kid went off and they solved a problem, and they came back and told us about it afterwards."
I just see them more interacting in a more positive way, you know, because I see them, I see them...
So, classroom observation.
...all the whole entire school. Yeah, I just see them interacting differently in the hallways or showing more empathy with each other, so I see it based on a visual assessment.
Okay, good.
And even in the classroom, as we explained, the math, our new math initiative, our new math program, there's part of it where you're connecting to the prior knowledge, but then the students are turning and talking, how they talk to each other, how they're interacting. At this grade level, it's more of a visual observation than, you know, a documented observation, and we do see, as you said, less incidents that are happening. They're kind, they're helping each other in class, and that's the way we're, you know, assessing it.
Good, good. And as we come back from COVID, I think things will get, continue to get better and better. So, second question. You talked about tools that you used in your PLC meetings to measure, to measure what's going on in performance. And there was a little slide right after that, and it had I-Ready and BAS and Fanta and Pennell and the Writing Revolution. So, are the tools you're using to measure your progress the tools that are intrinsic to those programs, or is there something up on top that's providing you with an overview of everything?
So, in our ELA, we're using Fanta and Pennell, our guided reading, the BASS is what we use to measure the students' reading progress. With our math program, we have exit tickets, we have unit assessments, we're collecting that. Both coaches, Lori DeAndrea and Kelly Gillian, they collect it, they have spreadsheets that they are, you know, we're inputting all of that data. During our PLC meetings, the teachers are bringing student work so they can measure what does it look like to be on-grade level, what does it mean to be approaching and above. So, you know, we're using all of that information, the Writing Revolution is also another measure, another that I had just mentioned.
So, the program tools are the tools.
About bringing the program tools, correct.
Very good. That's it. I'm happy. Thank you so much.
Okay, great.
Other questions?
So, thank you guys for the presentation. Everything was definitely awesome. I was last year's liaison for Lee F. Jackson, and I got an opportunity to see the joy in the building, and I definitely loved that. Question for tonight, you showed the chart that talked about the students were above-grade level, below-grade level, the whole entire chart, and so obviously, there's a wide spectrum. You spoke to the additional support for folks, for the young people who are, you know, below grade level and growing. I'm curious what things we do around the students who are above-grade level to ensure that, you know, in a single classroom, that maybe they're not getting bored. that, you know, in a single classroom, that maybe they're not getting bored by everything sort of staying in a, in, by you trying, you have to be there for all of the students. But if somebody is kind of above grade level, what are the things that we're doing to make sure that they are still getting the enrichment that they require?
So our new math program has, it's broken down into levels that during the daily three, the teacher could work with a small group. There's a challenge section that gives them extra activities. So each lesson is broken down where there are just basic skills, where it's moderate, and then where it's challenging. So that's where the teachers will come in, have the students during that daily three for math, where they are grouped according to their abilities. And then they could, for the students that are above, they will complete the challenge section. The same with ELA, we measure the students through the BASS. And then during our guided readings, we provide them with the materials that are for their reading level. So if a student is measured above grade level, obviously they're reading and they're responding to the level that they're measured.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, I did have one question around SEL, specifically, there was a call-out in the slide for Second Step Program with Parent Home Links. I have a little bit of information of what Second Step Program is. I'd like to hear how you guys are implementing it, specifically around the Parent Home Links.
So my, our school social worker, Ms. Delnisha Baker, she's really the lead in the Second Step. And what she does is, it's built into her schedule where she'll visit the classrooms and she initiates the lessons. The home links, she provides the teachers with all of the home links and the teachers will send them to the families. There's different activities that they could support, what is the lessons that are being taught in the classroom. So Ms. Baker initiates it, the teachers, they follow up, and then we send home information for the family. We have the multicultural activities for heritage. Every month we do some type of a heritage acknowledgement and we send home the links that support that.
Okay, and then a follow-up question. Do you see, do you observe the children actually leveraging the strategies taught by Second Step in the day-to-day activities?
Yes, so whenever there's a conflict, we bring in the social worker or my psychologist and we use the language that's in the Second Step. They'll reflect, they'll talk about how they feel. If something, just say something happened at the playground, we built in after lunch that they have that restorative circle time where they could talk and they express and they use the language from Second Step. I did not like that you did this, this is how it made me feel, next time, you know, I want you to be kinder. So they are using the language that is from the Second Step Program, which is fabulous. Second Step is, it starts in ECP, we adopted it because it just spiraled up into LEF Jackson. And I know that during the SEL district-wide, there was talk about bringing it up to the other schools. And it goes to adult, the program.
Thank you.
Okay.
I don't have any questions, but I do want to formally thank you at the same time as I apologize for our delay because I know you guys must be exhausted and those little ones have tons of energy. So you have to be ready to go early tomorrow morning, so thank you very, very much.
You're very, very welcome. Thank you for having us. Thank you very much. We always enjoy showcasing our fabulous students, so thank you for having us.
Thank you, thank you, good night. Next on our agenda, thank you to all the teachers that came out as well. Next on our agenda, we have C2, a presentation from Equal Opportunity Schools. Are we to remain, I see you standing up okay?
All right, thank you. Let me make sure my clicker is going right. All right, good evening, everyone. I am from the south, so I'm going to say it again so I can hear it right back. Good evening, everyone. Hello, great to see y'all. My name is Jessica Lamb, I am the Partnership Director from Equal Opportunity Schools. It's really lovely to be here with you all. I'm going to go over what our partnership has looked like between the district and EOS, give you some data, some information, not only just on sheer numbers of students that we've been able to identify, but also information from both staff and students about their own perspectives on classes, mindset, and much more. So let's get into it. There we go. I like to base every presentation I do about Equal Opportunity Schools on this, which this is, hasn't been updated since the pandemic, however, this is from 2018, of illustrating college completion for every racial group within the United States, specifically 25 to 29-year-olds that have attained a bachelor's degree or higher. I think this is very important to look at because if you look at these different charts, you'll see that there are some glaring disparities, particularly for Black and Hispanic Latinx adults of 25 to 29 years old. When I think about my own, I grew up outside of Cleveland, Ohio, it's called Lorain, Ohio, and think about my school district, which was overwhelmingly Black and Latinx, and think about what our graduation rates are now that we are fully adults. And I think about how kind of eerily, but not unpredictably, that this data holds true based off of a lot of systemic issues that we see every day within our education system. And so overseeing this and noticing that this is from college and what your graduation rate should be as you are out of the K-12 and beyond setting, we have to kind of backwards plan and think about where this has started and where do we have opportunities to actually stop this? So, wanted to give you some more data on, this is no different, this information, if I was to get more granular onto a state level, into a community level, of what this looks like for AP or IB classes. White students tend to be 1.3 times more likely than Hispanic Latinx students and 1.8 times more likely than Black students to be enrolled specifically in AP classes. I could switch that out and say honors, I could also switch that out and say IB. And those numbers tend to hold very true. And within the state of New York, you see it's actually higher. White students are 2.1 times more likely and 2.6 times likely, respectively, of Hispanic and Black students to be in AP classes. So when we look at this data and we see the college completion rates for students years out from high school, we're noticing that if we're going to really think about this problem, like this problem and how we're going to solve it, we have to go back to K-12 and think about what are ways that this is permeating. And currently, within the high school level, there's about 750,000 low-income students and students of color every year who are not placed in challenging courses. This includes AP, Advanced Placement, International Backstory. This also can include honors, dual credit, or enrollment, depending on the school district and what they offer. And as you can see, that is a tremendous amount of students who are not getting an opportunity to enroll in classes that they might be interested in, that might spark their interest in a career or a major. And so our job at EOS is to really think about how can we ensure that all of these students have the opportunity to take challenging advanced courses within their own school communities and have the highest level of success, regardless of what that looks like. If a student has an interest in a course, that they're able to take it. If a student wants to see if this is something that aligns with their career interests, they're able to have access to it. A teacher notices a student's potential in this and they would like them to take it. So just a little information about our partnerships. We're in 800 high schools, which is representing 250 school districts in 33 states. And what I specifically put down here is, a lot of the times when I'm asking staffs, what would they like to learn more about other than the data? There's a lot of interest in the data. A lot of times it comes down to, like, how can we just support students? What are the ways that we can reach our students and encourage them? What are ways that our professional development can reflect our learning mindsets, our pedagogy, our best instructional practices to serve students, particularly students who would be first-time AP or IB or honors takers? Oh, I'm sorry, that cut off a little bit. But our district goals for this year's partnership was, one, increase the participation, their attention, the success within AP and IB courses, ensuring that students who are the furthest from these higher-level classes know, first of all, that they're cared for, that they will be supported within their classroom settings, and have access to all of the opportunities available. And our 22, 23 participation goal for targeted students, I'm going to get into the next slide in a little bit of what that means, is 65%. So there's a chart you're going to see in a little bit that you will be like, what is this all saying? 65% is our participation goal. Okay, I'll break down those numbers further. What that's looked like for school-based initiatives, trusted adult conversations, which have been getting a lot of buzz within Woodlands High School, in which students within the fall survey actually identified adults that they really trust within the school to actually share their academic interests or actually name, you know, I'm nervous about taking this class because I actually don't know the teachers that are teaching IB or AP. And the teachers and staff, I want to make sure that's clear, it does not have to be instructional staff, it can include non-instructional staff too, as they play a huge role in the relationships that they have with students in the school, are able to have those conversations with students. And then what got a little cut off is AP and IB student outreach events. Principal Smith was just telling me that they had a curriculum fair, which was a huge success largely because there's quite a few students who wanted to be involved, who they made sure were behind the tables for the different course offerings and were doing a lot of, hey, come over here, friend, you should like learn more about this class. And how that was really motivating students to learn more. Because of course, students want to hear from other students all the time. So let's get into some data. So this is from staff at Woodlands High School, adult middle school and high school. And we asked them, what are the benefits of students even taking an AP or an IB class? You see that they had a lot of options. And I'm going to do a little of my teacher talk for you all. If you notice up here, the top three, you had developing critical thinking skills, having a college life experience, really getting into the learning mindsets. What do you notice about the bottom three choices? I'll give some wait time. What do you notice about those bottom three? Yeah, yeah, they're focused on the exam. Now, students, and I remember this from being a teacher, if I ask students, what are the perks of AP and IB, they're like, I passed the exam. I could take the exam, I pass it, right? Because the students, you're like, I am motivated by this idea because I know that this can give me more credit, I could bypass some classes in college. What's really interesting for staff is that they're really speaking to the experiences that really set them up for post-high school, which is incredibly important. I think a lot of times too, as educators, we have a lot, we get a lot of our information from quantitative data. I have easy access to grades, I have easy access to test scores or prereqs. And what this is showing is that qualitative skills is what a lot of the teachers were naming have been incredibly important. And we're going to keep going with that theme. We asked staff what were very good predictors of student success in AP and IB. Not surprisingly, the top ones, student motivation, perseverance, the growth mindset. Right underneath that was effective study and note-taking skills. The bottom three, kind of going back to that quantitative, prereqs, GPA, test scores. And again, those are the things that I always had immediate access to as a teacher. Immediate, right? When you're doing course selection, a lot of times when you're thinking about AP and IB, they're like, well, what did they take last year? What were the grades they got for that last year course? But we're actually noticing is that, again, qualitative is really helpful for a lot of staff in actually seeing what students are doing in the classroom. So this chart is what I was referring to. You'll see right here that advanced courses, they really are a microcosm of opportunity and what, who has access to courses actually within the school. So if you look over here, I'm going to go from left to right, we are able to break down and actually tell you who is in AP and IB, we put them together right now. And so this was taken from the fall. I know we have a course, a data course upload coming up next month, so it will be updated for the spring as well. So we have every racial group and then we also have subgroups. Yes, yes, yeah. And so we have every subgroup represented as well by income. And so if you're wondering, what is the dotted line? That's right, I said 65%, and you have 60 up here, so I will adjust that number for you. But the dotted line is actually representing, if every group had the parity of getting to that number, how many more students from each subgroup would have to be entered into those classes to make that a reality? So what you're seeing in this instance is, if I go over to the medium and high-income Black and African-American student group, one more student would have to be enrolled for next year to actually get to that 60%. You see over here, we have nine students for students who are low-income and are Black and African-American. Hispanic Latinx, you see there'd be five students for medium-high-income group, eight for the low-income group, and for white, non-Hispanic, oh, nope, there'd be nothing. So you're able to see very clearly who is in these classes and who is not. And also, what would it take to actually fill in those gaps? And if you're wondering, how do you even get that number? What our lovely data team does is they look at what are the highest participating groups? So looking at this chart, I'm able to see who are the highest participating groups. And then they come up with an algorithm that gives a number that typically is rigorous, but also can be achieved within one year. So I wanted to get into a year at a glance. So we are in Phase Two, which typically represents year two of a partnership. And it really goes into three steps. You study, collecting the data, which comes in the form of the survey. Then we go to strategy. We have this data, what are we doing with it? And then we go into support because if our focus is first-time takers and making sure they have access to the classes, that really doesn't mean much if there are not supports in place to make sure that they're in a welcoming environment, have the student cues and conditions of belonging to really thrive in those classrooms. So just to go over what this looks like on a more granular level, the first step, educating the entire staff on partnerships. So with COVID, I know none of us, partnership directors were in person, so it was really lovely, I was able to be here right at the start of the year to talk to the high school staff about what is Equal Opportunity Schools, what does this look like this year, why are you taking this survey, what is this survey going to tell you? And that was incredibly helpful for them to understand what this purpose of Equal Opportunity Schools was. Then we went ahead and started surveying students and staff later in the fall. The goal is 90% participation. Why? Because we want to have the majority of staff and students voice present. And then the third is, and some schools already have this in their own form, is like having a group of people, which is roughly an equity team, to honestly carry out the work in the school. Like who is planning the curriculum fairs? Who are the people who are helping with the trusted adult conversations? And that's really important to us within the survey. So when the survey was taken, the school team received all of these resources, which included student outreach lists. So when we survey the students, the whole point of that is that we're actually identifying students who are not in AP and IB and also the reasons of why they said they were not. You also, and you'll see this in a little bit, student insight cards for every student who is on the outreach list. And those student outreach cards, or I should say insight cards, excuse me, are giving you a lot more information that you might not know if you're teaching the student within a block, like within the day. So you're hearing a lot more about what their career interests are, what classes they're interested in. Also, you get to learn about what learning mindsets the survey uncovered. We also have a detailed Equity Pathways Report, which gives more information on what staff and students said, which you'll see in a little bit. And we have a Student Support and Belonging Report, which Principal Smith said has been very insightful for him in being able to see what students are specifically saying about their sense of belonging within the classroom. And just a little more data, which I kind of said, but trusted adult and study skills adults, students are able to name who those adults are for them. We got some more data on student belonging. Students also said, hey, this is how I want to be supported. This is what would make me more likely to enter an AP or IB class. These are the different instructional practices or supports that would make me more likely to join this class. And of course, what I had mentioned the very first slide was teachers naming what they would like to better support their students as well. So we get a lot of data. So I want to give you some information on what this actually looked like. So first off, So first off, you saw that number, which was 90%. We wanted students at 90%, we wanted staff at 90%. We did achieve that with staff members, so we had 67 staff members who completed the survey. On the student side, we had about 55%, which is 314 students. So goal for next year is to have that 90. You'll see it a little bit more in the insight cards, but when students don't take the survey, they would not be excluded from being on an outreach list, but the more information, the better. So if they don't have the survey, then that's less information we have, and that can just make it a little trickier, so we want to make it more easier. And also, 42% of the staff completed staff recommendations. So the staff recommendations are staff literally giving teacher recommendations for students. Reason why that's very powerful is that there could be students who might not have or name a trusted adult or a study skills adult. So it's very powerful for teachers to be able to advocate for students who might feel like, I don't have like an adult in the building that I want to talk to about this, or they're able to say, I've seen the work of this student, and they are more than capable of being in this course. And that's incredibly important, and I know that staff care deeply, also about hearing what their fellow staff members say. So the strategizing part, you receive the report after the survey. You form this outreach plan, because now these students have been identified. How are we actually going to outreach to them? What's our goal? How are we going to do this? And then the funnest part, which is beginning to actually outreach to the students. So here's a little more information. So one thing that staff was able to see is this info on what is causing students to not necessarily go into AP and IB classes. So this is a breakdown of students who are not in AP or an IB. And you see that there are five different barriers here. Students were able to name, hey, you haven't been in these classes before. Why? Can you give us an idea? Is there a barrier that's keeping you from this? As you'll see, and you see the two breakdowns here, the blue is representing medium-high-income, white, and Asian students. The reason why those two groups are put together is because of their high representation specifically for the school within AP and IB. So that's the reason why they are put together. And then you have historically underrepresented students of color and low-income students. The most popular barriers that we were seeing tended to be adult encouragement barrier and the welcome barrier. To go over what that means, adult encouragement, I get this question a lot from school leaders. You can't necessarily determine, because students are not writing it in, if they're talking about in-house or outside of school. So we cannot make assumptions about any of that, so adult encouragement can be any of those things. Benefits barrier is students being like, I don't actually know why taking AP or taking IB would be better than not. Like, give me the benefits, please. General knowledge is essentially saying, tell me more about these courses, tell me more of what this consists of. School access is really trying to get through the minutia of how do I enroll in this? Am I allowed to take this? There's some students who might think, I got this grade in X class. I think that like would disbar me from being able to be in an AP or IB class. Right? So school access refers to that. And then welcome barrier goes into a student maybe saying, oh, I don't really see a lot of like student, like my friends aren't in those classes, so I don't know about that. Or I don't see a lot of students who look like me in those classes, so I don't know if I'm going to be in that. So welcome is not being able to see yourself, for whatever reason, in an advanced class, therefore you're opting out. And then this is probably one of my favorites of terms of data. We asked staff and students, why do you think that students aren't taking AP or an IB? And then we asked the students who aren't taking it, why they aren't taking it? So if you see on the left and the right, I'll give you some time with me not talking, just so you can see it on your own, and then I'll voice over it. So on the left is staff, and on the right is students. So if you're looking at this, you'll see some commonalities. Too much work, won't be successful, are in the top two. They're mixed. However, I'm seeing some people like, oh. What's interesting, but I thought, was that too much work is named way higher with adults than it is for students. Significantly higher. Same with won't be successful either. Very different numbers, like flipped roles, but very different percentages there. You also see on the staff side, don't know the benefits, which kind of relates to the not enough information provided from students, are intimidated, which doesn't pop up on the student side, and then concerned about GPA. Concerned about GPA does pop up on both sides. And on students, they're saying not enough information and not enough support available. And I do often talk to guidance teams about this, because I always, when I talk to them, they're like, Jess, I'm telling you, we go in the classrooms, we talk to all the students, we're there, we're there. And I always say this, if you are a student who feels like you do not see yourself in a class, you can easily be in that classroom or homeroom when someone is giving you this talk and think, that's not meant for me, that's meant for like the person next to me. And that's real, and that's very deep-seated when students are feeling that way, that there has to be very intentional, really one-to-one conversations and experiences that students are having to get over that. And we're going to talk a little bit more about that, which is the support of one-to-one conversations. So we asked students, hey, what made you decide to take a class? What got you there? And so you'll see the top five reasons. I want to make sure I name this. I plan to take before high school does not always appear in a lot of my partner's top five, let alone number one. So, you know, that's what's up Greenberg Central, that that is coming up as number one for students. The rest of them, you see how much of it is based off of relationships. A conversation with your parent or guardian, a conversation with a friend, a conversation with a staff member. Rounding it out is having an announcement in homeroom and advisory. So you see, that's a very good mix of these one-to-one conversations and a whole group as well. And we asked staff, you know, if you're willing to take more action to make this more equitable, what are some of the steps you'd like to do? And so you'll see on the right, 44 said, I'd have one-to-one conversations with students, yeah. 40 said, can we do more professional development around this? 33 said, can we identify or improve identification practices in our encouragement practices? Okay, and you see the rest, we have 28 for academic support, revising policies to increase student access. A lot of times, a lot of my schools will look directly at where are our drop policies? What do those look like? Do we have prereqs? What do those look like? How much access do we get to families and understanding these like different systems? And then we have 22 who said that they would tutor students. And then we asked students who are not in either of these classes, like what would make you more likely? What would push you further in wanting to do it? You see, number one, half of them said, just more info. Very simple, just more information, please. Then we had study and homework support, peer mentors or study partners, which has been a popular option for partners as they keep going, opportunities to redo assignments, which has always been a very interesting instructional practice that we've seen teachers and staff talk about, and study skills training, which I've seen partners incorporate by doing like AP camps or IB camps in the summer. I think about peer mentors, which is immensely helpful as well. And I want to give you the survey breakdown, so we can talk more about who are the students that we found. There's 170 students at the high school who are identified, who would be first-time AP or IB, like takers. We had, I created 11 outreach lists, and so what that means is I was able to create specific lists for students so it'd be easier for counselors or admin to reach out to them and see what are the commonalities. So for example, I had an outreach list that was specifically students who are experiencing the welcome barrier. I had another outreach list that was students who specifically named the adult encouragement barrier. I did have a list too for students who, there was an option to say that, I didn't know I was allowed. I think there's like six students on that list, who just like didn't know they were allowed. I was like, yeah, we need to talk to them, like we need to, we need to talk to those students. And I also had it by content too. So students who had an interest in history, students had an interest in science, and those are very general, so the work of counselors was, you know that this is what's up, and now we've got to figure out what exactly what class, or what would fit, like a course, like scope and sequence. So this is an example of what an insight card looks like. And oftentimes, as a teacher, and I taught elementary school, there's things that you know about your students, that you've learned about them throughout the course of a year, and then there's some things that like you might not know, like as much of. So with this example, this is what an insight card looks like. So you have the educational goal, the career interest, you have the trusted adults over here, you have the GPA, it's a little scrunched up, but it's over there. But then you also get to see, why hasn't the student enrolled in an advanced course? While they have, as you see over here, they have an AP comparable test score. So then you kind of want to, well, what's up? What's going on here? And then you learn, look at four learning mindsets. We ask, in our survey, we ask questions that uncover learning mindsets. So those are four of them up there, growth mindset, purpose of learning, focus and grit. And then we have the reported barriers. So let's get into, oh, and then we also go to students, I forgot, the option to free write. Not all students free write, and that's fine. As a teacher, I always say, if a student is giving you their words for free, please take it and listen and read it and hear what they have to say. So let's get into some students here, shall we? That's my favorite part. 11th grader here, their goal is to get a high school diploma. They want to get into a trade, not sure yet, that's okay. We see that they listed a trusted adult and a study skills adult. Their program interest is music, like music theory. And their general interest is history. So the difference between curriculum program interest and general interest, general interest can just strictly be, oh, this subject is like something I like or I'm interested in. The curriculum interest is really pointing out what they'd be willing to take. Sometimes it's the same thing, sometimes it's different, and that's always helpful to talk to the student more, to learn more. But you see the learning mindsets from this student, this 11th grader, three of them. And we have the reported barriers, which are also three, adult encouragement, welcome, and the benefits barrier. They said they haven't enrolled, I'm not sure I would have classmates to study with or partner with for projects, I'm worried it's going to hurt my GPA. They'd be more likely if they knew that their class materials and exam fees would be paid for, and they knew they'd have opportunities to redo assignments. We have test scores right here, and then for the student, you say that they didn't write too much, but they did say they would like the school to know, like, I don't want to go to college, which was reinforced up here, as saying that they want to get into a trade, they want to get a degree. And I also think it's helpful, because I sometimes run into this, where regardless of what a student wants to do after high school, whether that's vocational, whether that's going to college, that should not play a role on if they can take or have access to AP or IB or not. Like that should not be inherently tied together. If you have an interest in something, you should be able to take it. Here's another student, 10th grader. They want to get a four-year degree, thinking about a therapist. They listed two trusted adults and study skills adults. They're really interested in the world languages. The learning mindset, they have four of them. Other readiness indicators, they consider taking AP or IB. They feel like their courses currently, right now, aren't challenging, and they feel like classes aren't preparing them right now for college, is what this student said. They have AP comparable test score for geometry, reported barriers, benefits, college belonging, school access, and welcome. They haven't enrolled because they don't know if they'll get a good grade, think it might hurt their GPA. And they have competing priorities in their schedule that are preventing them from taking the classes. What would make them more likely? Class materials would be paid for. They could have transportation to or from school outside of normal school hours. And they knew that they had optional study skills training, like time management, organizational skills. And you see a little comment that they wrote, which was, agree, I'm trying to push myself and work harder to finish the year strong. Oop, and then we have one more student, you don't know their name. Yeah. So I'm just going to keep going. Yep, no problem. I was like, oh, no, no, no. I thought I had my square up. So the second, or the third step here is, one, tracking enrollment progress, adjusting strategies, and then formulating your student or staff support plan. So what we're doing right now is course enrollment is happening. The first upload is going to happen about April 19th. The second is going to be happening in about two more weeks after that. And so to fully get into the next steps, once we have the course enrollment, and that is given to admin, the end-of-year report is going to be June of 2023. For school leadership, they're going to be codifying student supports for first-time takers, and these are just examples of what that can look like. A lot of times, they look at drop policies. Sometimes they look at redos and retakes as instructional practices. Sometimes they're looking at peer mentoring. And right now, we're in phase two. My recommendation is that phase two is repeated. Oftentimes, when we talk to school partners, they kind of look at, oh, I do phase one for a year, then I do phase two for a year, then I do phase three for a year. Phase two is the hardest phase because it's really about codifying the practices that regardless on if there is a change on who's on an equity team, or who is the school leader, et cetera, that it's still functioning because it's a part of school culture. And we know if we're codifying something, it has to be longer than a year. Hence why I recommend phase two again, so that way it can be codified practice. All right, I have this last quote. I'm going to leave it up here, because I've talked a lot. But this is a quote, not from a student at Woodlands, but it's a quote I like to end with, because it is a student who has taken the survey before. I think it's really vital that students' words are always front and center when you have the opportunity to do that. So I appreciate y'all, and I will open it up to questions. Oh, perfect.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you.
Good presentation, very nuts and bolts. I'm curious, first, how do you, how do we know we succeeded? We've had programs like this before, maybe like 10 years ago, and we didn't know, we knew that momentum mattered, that if you didn't make it in whatever your chosen career area was, within six years after you graduated from high school, chances are you wouldn't make it, so momentum mattered and all that. So we had generic nationwide stats, but we didn't have any good way of keeping track of whether we succeeded and what happened to our students once they graduated from high school. Do you, has there been advances in this area? Do you have ways of dealing with that?
Yeah, so I would answer that by saying that we have a really great research team at EOS. They have solely focused on what has it looked like within a school over the course of years in terms of who is actually enrolling in the programs, and if that's sustained throughout the year, so it becomes more practice. So I wish I could say we had that data of, once they are in the outside world and are like post-secondary.
So you've got sustaining data within the school system. If they make it over that initial hump of taking that first course, do they persist?
Exactly, and we do have that information that we give to schools every fall after the first year to show them, here's your full list of first-time takers. Here's a list of students who have dropped, because I think that is important data, that we're like, we need to see that. And then we also give that information specifically to guidance, because we're able to at least know what classes that the students were in. And from there, those are our follow-up conversations they're able to have with that student to figure out, why did you drop that class? Like, why? And so you can get more information of thinking, how are we codifying the student cues and conditions of belonging? What supports do we have right now that are working, but what are also ways that this is not working? And I think a lot of that attrition data kind of goes into, what's our drop policy? How many conversations are students having with teachers before they're getting to the place where they're dropping? And that kind of really gets into the structures of that. So I wish we had the post-secondary data for you, but we are able to have a lot of data to look year after year, how many students are entering the program and persisting.
I'll take it. Thank you very much.
No problem, anytime.
Hi, I just want to thank you. This is one of the best presentations I think we've seen. Unfortunately, it's very late, so I don't think we're as energetic as we could be.
It's okay, I tried to bring the energy as much as I could.
But this was great. I said before, and I'll say again at the other EOS presentation, I think some of this has to happen earlier than high school. I saw one of your success indicators was motivation and belief that you can do the work, and that happens way before ninth grade. So, and the barriers were motivation, I think. And so, yeah, that's the only thing I would say about that, but I don't, I think you guys only work with high schoolers, or?
Yeah, I was going to say, we have heard a lot from partners in this conversation where we have high schools that are in the same building as middle school or see a very much a funnel of like, we have our students who are with us for K-8, we know they're coming to our high school. Can you do some more work on this end? So I know that they have not officially done this, but they have tried to start doing pilots for middle schools. I know that my partner over in South Orange, because we haven't done the pilots yet, what they did is, hey, can we have the middle school sit in on? what they did is, hey, can we have the middle school sit in on your school launch? So they can hear also what's going on and see this as well. And that was actually very helpful, too. So we're going to try to do more with middle school.
Thank you so much for this information and data, and.
Appreciate it.
See you soon.
All right, thank you.
Okay, trustees. The time is now 8:10, 35 PM. Next on our agenda is a budget presentation. I'm going to recommend that we table that. But I need us to, I guess, go back to the, think in your walk back to the table, whether we're going to table the budget presentation. And then we'll, I guess, vote on that. Thank you. So I asked for a motion to table the budget presentation. Is there a motion or do trustees want to hear their presentation tonight?
Well, I second the motion. Is that what we're waiting for?
I need someone to make a motion.
Oh, you need someone to make the motion. So I move that we pull the budget presentation until next.
Second.
Is somebody talking? Oh.
Discussion.
Are we live? We hear people? Okay, we just hear you talking, so we didn't know what you were saying. Okay, it's properly moved in second. I hear request for discussion?
Okay, so if I understand correctly, we need to come up with a decision on what the budget is by the 18th of April. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And we have a work session on the 11th of April, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so then, and in between is, is spring recess and probably not a lot is going to happen during that period of time. So if we hash everything out on the 11th, then will we be able to come back with a, with a budget by the 18th? Yes, okay. So.
I would prefer we have a special meeting specifically around the budget, but I mean, I'm one person.
I'm good with that, I'm willing to do that. When would you want to do that?
I don't know. We would, that would, I would ask the district clerk to contact everyone in the morning when they have their calendars and work calendars and personal calendars, and they can, we can coordinate dates. But frankly, there's a lot of things we need to, I think, discuss in this budget. And a lot of work has been put into the current draft. I think we received a document earlier today. We don't have our full board here. Trustee Pineda?
I don't know about everyone else, but looking at my calendar real quickly here, I really don't have availability before the 11th. So that's just my calendar.
Okay, so how do the people feel about having a special budget-only meeting? Or leaving it to the 11th? Trustee Washington?
What's the date of the 11th? We have to, the time we have to be here, is it 6:30?
Mm-hmm. And that's a, that's a work session, so we have all the other things on top of it.
If we can't do a special meeting prior, can you just do an hour prior to the meeting? Or make the meeting 6 o'clock instead of 6:30?
I mean, I may be able to make 6 o'clock on that time, but that just means we may have a longer meeting. So, I, I mean, is everyone opposed to a special meeting just on the budget? Nothing else?
The time, I guess, they have spring break, I don't know.
I'm fine with it, assuming that we can get the budget done afterwards. So for example, if we did it on Thursday, the 13th of April, then that only gives us one, two, three work days, I mean, there's a weekend in there, to get the budget prepped after, after we look at what we're doing. So if that's not an issue, if we're only going to change, you know, eight or 10 lines of, of the budget, then maybe it's okay. Lisa, if we had a special meeting on Thursday, the 13th, do you think you could still make something by the 18th for us to vote on?
So are you saying that we would discuss it on the 11th and the 13th?
Well, I'm, we're, we're, we're moving back and forth between doing one or the other. Okay, either having a special meeting for just the budget, because there are all sorts of things piled on top of your head during, during a regular work session, right? Or, you know, we can either carve out room on the day of, or we can do it, we can do it another, another day. And that's what we're trying to figure out what we're going to do.
I mean, look, the problem, yes, trustee Pineda?
What I said earlier about my availability is I don't have anything before the 11th. I would want to have the discussion about the budget as soon as possible. So I would not want to do it after the 11th. I think it's, I think the 11th already is cutting it close. So I would suggest we figure out how to do it on the 11th.
Or on the 10th?
He's saying, he's saying he would, he would not want to wait to the 13th, basically. So yeah, I, I was shooting for before the 11th as well because this is the third draft? There may be other drafts. Like, this doesn't mean, like, to me, if we could meet Wednesday, Thursday, or Fri- well, not Wednesday, tomorrow, but Thursday or Friday of this week.
Thursday, the 30th, I'm good, but I don't know if Ashley can do it.
Well, that's why I asked for the district clerk to get everyone's schedules.
Okay.
In the morning, when everyone is fresh. And then Ashley said he cannot do it on the 30th. But this is a draft, so we need to, Frank, we got, look, the problem is we got a bunch of information today. A lot of the information is exact session information that needs to be reviewed by each individual board member, and then questions posed. Trustee Pineda can definitely shoot your questions over or speak to one of us with your questions, so we can get those in, in a meeting. And then by the 11th, we should have a, a draft, correct? If, if we at least give you some feedback from.
If I get it early enough, I'm not here next week.
Right.
Okay, she's not here next week, so that's, that's out. So then the 30th, the 30th works for me.
What did you want to say, trustee Valen? Okay. You don't know what you want to say, or you don't know about the 30th? Because I'm asking people to.
The 30th does not work for me. But I don't, I think waiting until the 13th is too late. I mean, either we meet early on the 11th.
Well, look, we can meet early on the 11th, and when we have a six-hour meeting, our evaluations are going to say the meeting is too long. But this is the decision that is being made. Either we can go home and look at our calendars and see if we can make, I, I'm just, I mean, you said the 30th, 30th, the 31st, the 10th, whatever. Or you all want to say no now, and we push for an earlier meeting on the 11th, knowing that the 11th is going to go very late.
Well, I think we need to go with our district clerk calling us in the morning, and then we can have a decision.
Okay, worst case, we clear our schedule on the 11th. Fair enough.
Did you have any feedback, trustee Thomas?
Yeah, I mean, it's, I, I actually am going to be traveling a lot this month, so I won't be here. I, I won't even, I'm actually going to be on the plane on the 11th. So the 10th, if we did a special meeting, would, would, would work. But the, but the 11th, I'll literally be in the air during, during our meeting.
Okay, so we'll try to take a poll tomorrow morning, please. Thank you.
Okay. Aye.
So, all those in favor and tabling, see three?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion carried. Next, we have committee reports. Are there any committee reports?
Sure.
Yes, trustee Warner?
The Finance and Facilities Committee met on 3/16/23 at 6:30 PM at the Woodlands Innovation Lab and via Zoom. Attendees included David Warner, Lisa Raymond, Dennis Paglis, Chris Valen, Katie McGee, Jessica Muldoon, Megan Hack, Ashley Pineda, Gabriela Barahona, Michael Messina, Carol Allen, Amy Ashley Moore, Tracy Mares, Luke Johnson, Steve Morton, Julia Long, Dr. Linda Iverson, Dr. Christopher Macaluso, and Elizabeth Sandona. Two items on our agenda were both important and very time-consuming. We bypassed most of the agenda and discussed four topics. One, phase-two construction project options. The administration proposed four scenarios, each of which included an $11.7 million ECP classroom addition to Lee F. Jackson and varying lists of high-priority repair and replacement items from our building condition survey, with updated prices and costs ranging from a high of $81 million to a low of $24 million. They recommended a bond vote in the fall of 2023. Then the superintendent suggested we reduce transitions between schools and house all ECP students under one roof by making Lee F. Jackson a dedicated pre-K to K school and moving all the first graders to Highview. This could eliminate the need for the additional ECP wing construction project. The superintendent requested another month to study the feasibility of this project. After some discussion, the committee determined that Highview does not have the capacity to absorb the entire Lee F. Jackson first grade. The student, the superintendent then revealed that this was part of a larger strategy in which all grade levels are shifted up by one, and some portion of the administration is moved to the ECP main building. She cited the original capacity of Woodlands at 1,100 students as evidence that this is feasible. So if you, if you did all of that, that would be, Lee F. Jackson would be pre-K and K, no first graders. Highview would be grades one and two. RJ Bailey would be grades three, four, and five. And Woodlands would be grades six through 12. This is an interesting and innovative long-term solution to a problem that preserves the Princeton Plan and minimizes construction costs. However, school districts across the nation, including ours, are currently dealing with academic learning loss and social and emotional learning issues stemming from the COVID-19 pandemic, and it's come on with a vengeance. This is especially true at the secondary school level. We're implementing strategies to address these issues. It is not advisable to move the sixth grade to Woodlands until these strategies have proven successful. So that's years down the line. Contractually, class sizes are smaller than they were when Woodlands was built. So it used to be like 35 kids to a class, and now it's more like 27 as a maximum. So we need to study whether the sixth grade would fit at Woodlands when the ICL problems are solved and/or receipt over time. At this point, the committee considered project options for phase two without the $11.7 million ECP wing. The most economical option without the ECP wing costs is the all-roofs option with a price tag of $12.75 million. This included roofing projects at Lee F. Jackson, a Highview West Wing, we already did half of Highview, RJ Bailey, and Woodlands. We could reduce the amount of the construction bond using reserve funds. We considered that a vote for a smaller bond could be included as part of our May budget and a Board of Education candidate vote at the same time. We needed more detailed information on tax impacts before making a decision on drawing down our reserve funds. Therefore, the Finance and Facilities Committee recommended that we move forward with a bond for the May vote, replacing roofs of all the district school buildings at a cost, at a cost less than or equal to $12.7 million, and left the decision on whether and how much to draw down our reserves to the Board of Education. In response, the administration gathered the required information, and our board president called a special meeting on 3/22 to discuss this. At that meeting, the administration informed us that even the reduced-scale SECR, Environmental Quality Review, process could not be completed in time for a May vote. And the board agreed to draw down our reserves by $3 million and work toward a $9.75 million bond for the fall of 2023, which of course means that you're going to want to keep the tax increase from the budget as low as possible if you want to have any chance of this thing passing. Second topic, American Rescue Plan funds. We have $2 million in funds, $400,000 dedicated to learning loss, and $1.6 million for ventilation improvements from the federal government. All projects using this funding source must be submitted to NYSED by October 1st, 2023. We'd hope to partially offset the costs of our phase-one project with this money. We'd already, but we'd already submitted our project prior to the funding becoming available, and we thought we couldn't do it. But since the meeting, our Assistant Superintendent for Business has found a way around this, which was included in tonight's budget report, which we're now not going to listen to. But understand that we have a solution for that. We're going to take that federal money and plow it into phase one. So all that RJ Bailey ventilation. Do you want to say anything, Lisa? Okay. Three, RJ Bailey auditorium renovations. Briefly, all samples have been received. Seat fabric and paint colors have been chosen. We're preparing to submit the project to NYSED. Well, now NYSED has an issue with using the $50,000 of our $500,000 we got from New York State for the roof repair, because it's a repair. We have the option of designating this money as part of a larger auditorium roof replacement project using some of our end-of-year funds. We've got some leftover funds at the end of the year, so we may actually replace a portion of the RJ Bailey roof on this way, and that may reduce the size of the bond a little bit. This is a topic for a next Finance and Facilities Committee meeting, so stay tuned. Topic number four, draft budget. Draft number two budget increase is 5.76%. Tax levy increase is 4.29%. Too big? We're going to have that budget discussion to, to talk about all of that and how we're going to get those numbers back down and what the, what the costs of that will be and what's acceptable. Draft two. Draft two, well, we'll talk about that at our, at our future meeting. Then we talked about the budget vote on May 16th at Woodlands. Polls open from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Finally, we reviewed a 39-page line-by-line draft budget appropriation status, status report, and the Assistant Superintendent for Business answered all our questions, which took a long time, but we got really into the depth, and no one can accuse us of not being open about our budget. The next meeting of the Finance and Facilities Committee is Thursday, April 23rd at 6:30 PM in Woodlands Innovation Lab and via Zoom. A preregistration Zoom link will be provided on the online calendar on the district website. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Warner. Any questions or comments? Okay, great. I would just clarify that you did talk about the restructuring of grades. I know a trustee during the meeting tried to clarify that the board has not had a full discussion on that plan, and so I would just clarify that in your minutes, because I think that, I got a few questions about that, and I know some other trustees did as well.
Okay.
Okay. So next on our agenda, Board President's Report. I am tabling that in the essence of time. It's now 10:56 PM. Are there any public comments? Did anyone stay this late to, no, okay. Now we're going to move on to policy presentation. We have one, two, three, four, what? We have one, two, three, four, five policies here for board review, for adoption at the April 18th meeting. Copies of these policies will be available in the district clerk's office. They will also be available in all school buildings and on our website. All comments concerning these policies should be submitted in writing form to the Board of Education. The policies are: Policy number 3110, media municipal governments slash senior citizen. Policy number 3440, diversity, equity, and inclusion. Policy number 5551, allocation of Title I Part A funds in the district. Policy number 5633, gender-neutral single occupancy bathrooms. And policy number 7133, education of students in foster care. Trustee Warner?
I had one comment on one policy, that's 3110. There was a, an or that I thought should be an and. Policy 3110 is media and municipal government senior citizens. In the second paragraph, it says, "In addition, a periodic newsletter may be prepared and sent to each resident of the district," and I want to say "and" posted on its website, because I don't want to say, oh, everybody's online now, so people don't need hard copy newsletters anymore. So I'd like to say "and." And that's, that's, I think that comment was made before, so I wanted to make sure it gets in there. Everything else, I'm good with.
Okay. Did you get that, Christine? Okay. Any other questions, concerns about these policies? They'll be out for 30 days or not quite April 18th? Anyone? No? Moving on. Next on our agenda are our regular meeting approvals. First, we have personnel instructional items, F1. Can I get a motion?
Are we tabling item G8?
That was the recommendation, but I need a motion.
I move that we approve the instructional personnel items presented for the board for approval this evening, with the exception of item G8.
Second.
Been properly moved in second. Is there any discussion? I would like discussion. I would say, just for clarification, item G8 is being tabled until the board can receive further information.
Okay.
Okay. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item F2, personnel non-instructional items.
I move that we approve the non-instructional personnel items presented to the board for approval this evening.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item F3, board action items.
I move that we approve the board action items presented to the board for approval this evening.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Any discussion? Discussion? Trustee Valen?
I would like, after we vote on this item, if perhaps trustee Warner could read item 6 out loud, if that's appropriate.
I6? Page, please, trustee.
After we vote, please, if, if you allow.
The page for clarification is 15 out of 22 for trustees.
Thank you.
Okay.
Do you want to read the motion beforehand, trustee Valen? Why after?
It's an announcement.
Okay. Yeah, would be, but it doesn't matter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Okay, let's read the announcements.
Item I6, Wise Way.
Wise Way.
Whereas the Woodlands Individualized Senior Experience, WISE, a program giving high school seniors the opportunity to design and implement self-directed projects during their senior year, began at Woodlands High School in Greenberg, New York in 1972. And whereas this innovative program was subsequently adopted by public and private high schools nationwide and has seen more than 35,000 students grow and learn through a wise experience. And whereas the Greenberg Central School District recognizes the impact this program has had on 50 years of graduates. And whereas a ceremony recognizing the 50th anniversary of the WISE program will be held on April 26, 2023 at Woodlands Middle High School, be it resolved that as recommended by the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby names the road on the Warburg campus leading to and from Pat Capone Road to the front of the Woodlands Middle High School building as WISE WAY. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent of schools to install honorary road signage donated by the town of Greenberg at the appropriate junctions and to take any other action necessary to effectuate the foregoing. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent of schools to take any action necessary to apprise the town of Greenberg, emergency management services, and/or law enforcement personnel of this road name change and designation.
Thank you, trustee Warner. And I'd like to thank you, trustee Warner, and you, trustee Valen, for all of the time and commitment that you've put into supporting the Woodlands Middle High School WISE program and helping to ensure that this resolution got onto our agenda and all the board members for passing it. You worked with our district clerk and our legal team to make this happen. So thank you very much. We appreciate your additional time and commitment. Next item on the agenda is our F4 finance items. Can I get a motion?
That we approve the finance items presented to the board for approval this evening.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next, we have F5, business items.
I move that we approve the business items presented to the board for approval this evening.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Any discussion?
Discussion.
Yes.
I have a question on item K2. On the field trip request form, it does not specify the manner of transportation to the event, and I just want to know how that's actually happening logistically.
I feel like you asked that before.
Is that the Penn relay?
Yep.
I believe they're going by school.
So it's transportation, our transportation company?
Because it's not specified on the form, that's why I was asking.
No, trustee Pineda asked for this information to be explained to us, that we know how they're getting there, you know, the cost, et cetera.
I have a question. So you're saying they're taking a trip to Philadelphia on the school, yellow school bus?
I'll have to check it out. I don't want to say exactly.
Yeah, because that doesn't sound right.
So bus type?
Yeah, usually.
I don't know. I'll find out.
Charter?
There's usually a charter.
So.
Would that stop the motion from going forward?
It's just not a complete bit of information. This, this is, the trip is in April 27th, so 27th to 29th.
So can this be approved at the next meeting, once we have the information?
I don't know if it's gonna, yeah, delay anything, like.
We've already secured the rule.
Yeah.
I'll find out. So I'll put it, I'll give it to you.
So we have to table it again, because, okay. So we need to resend that motion. I don't know who made the first motion on our board action items. Or were they business items? Sorry, business items? Was it you, trustee Warner? You've been making all the motions?
I rescinded the motion.
Okay, great. Can we get an amended motion, please?
I move that we approve the business items presented for the board for approval this evening, with the exception of item J2.
Wonderful. Is there a second?
Second, but I thought it was K2.
Is it K2?
K is in kite.
Yep.
You're right.
Second.
With the exception of K2.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Next, we have item F6, pupil personnel services items.
I move that we approve the pupil personnel services items presented to the board for approval this evening.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next, we have closing items, new business. Is there any new business? Yes, trustee Valen?
Were we considering returning to a second exec session to discuss the employment history of particular persons, personnel matters, or employee records?
That's up to trustees, if there's a motion.
I move, people don't know, that we return to a second exec session for the employment, to discuss the employment history of particular persons, personnel matters, and/or employee records.
Second.
It's improperly, properly moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Any abstentions? Motion carries. We are going into exec session. I can't stay all night, but hopefully we will be out sometime soon. Thank you. Yes, trustee Pineda?
Just a clarification point. We come out, we're not voting on anything at this point, right?
I don't know. There was a new business item that a trustee planned to bring up, so it's very possible.
I will, I'll table that. I won't bring that up tonight.
So.
So with that said, if we're not voting on anything, do we need to retain our multimedia folks here while we're in exec?
I have no idea.
Or can we just close out?
Either way, honestly. It's late.
I would recommend we just close out without.
Sounds good. So we're going to leave from exec session, you mean?
Correct, because we're not going to talk about anything else publicly. Thank you.